And nobody's presented anything to me after that. Anybody else here, elected appointed official from the county with a contract to consider? Okay, no action on that. Now the moment we've all been waiting for.
That's German.
That's German, no. That's the other moment. Item number three, presentation of proclamation to Texas Ranger Shane Morrow. Ranger Morrow, would you stand up please, sir? All right. I'm gonna read this in its entirety, so just get ready. Proclamation to recognition for Texas Ranger Lancer Shane Morrow in Eastland County, Texas. Whereas Texas Ranger Lancer Shane Morrow has decided to retire from his career in law enforcement on August the 31st of 2022, and whereas Shane Morrow is a native of Eastland County, began his career here upon his graduation in 1996 from DPS Academy, provided years of service for this area as a DPS trooper, and whereas Shane Morrow then promoted to a DPS agent with the Criminal Intelligence Division, and in 2008, he became a Texas Ranger and was stationed back in Eastland County. Whereas Ranger Morrow invested cases involving major violent crime, public corruption, officer-involved shootings, and participated in DPS border security, tactical programs, crisis negotiations, and whereas Ranger Morrow's investigation skills led to incarcerations and convictions of criminals up to and including life sentences, resulting in a safer Eastland County, Texas. Now therefore, Eastern County Commissioners Court does hereby proclaim our appreciation on August the 22nd to Texas Ranger Lancer Shane Morrow for his many years of service to Eastland County and to the state of Texas, and urge the appropriate recognition thereof. In our official capacity, we do hereby fix our signature from this date, the 22nd of August, 2022, and we've all signed it and it's been attested to. Congratulations. Congratulations. You gotta face the camera.
Russ, do you want one with him and the Commissioners?
That would be great. That would be great for you to do that.
What do we need to do?
A picture with y'all.
Suckle up?
Yes, back there.
Ready, one, two, three.
Small Robert.
He is smiling.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You bet.
Congratulations, sir.
Now, this is appropriate this time for you to make some comments.
Yeah.
Is Shane in danger?
I don't know, but be silent. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Shane. We do appreciate what you've done for Eastern County, sir. You bet. Anybody else want to make any comments about Shane? Russ, you're usually pretty vocal. You want to comment anything here about Shane and the work he's done?
Well, it's gonna be a great loss to Eastern County for Shane to leave us. He's done a great job over the years. He's now gonna be a part of Texas Ranger history. And he is having a party, he's celebrating in Mexico next week.
We'll take pictures. Yeah. Maybe, Russ.
Now we have, well, then I'll get out first. All right, we have item number four, which is discuss and consider the request from Eastland Memorial Hospital for an increase in the cooperative EMS support. And we have EMH CEO Joe Wright. Joe, you want to come on up and get on the record and talk to us?
Okay, I'm gonna let Ron present the data.
Okay.
What we're asking for is an increase in reimbursement from the city of Cisco and the company, and we will add an increase to our number also. We were informed at the last meeting of the co-op that it had been 14 years since there had been any price increases. And economically, you know, that just doesn't work. So when Ron talks about the numbers, he can explain the presentation that you all have. And what it's gonna amount to is, I believe, we're requesting a $20,000 increase for you.
Sure. So, Judge.
Your name for the record.
Ron Hunt.
Thank you.
So I did a quick analysis, and just to give the courts some information on the operations of EMS. EMS generates about 2.5 million in gross charges. That's charges that we send to the insurance company for having picked up somebody with our calls. As you know, in healthcare, no one pays what you charge them, and so there's about a 65% contractual. That means that we just write that percentage off of the 2.5 million. So when you look at our cash collections and how we pay for the EMS service, we have about a 35% margin from gross charges. So that puts us about $914,000. So off the 2.5 million, what we take to cash is about 900,000. When you look at the expenses, and these are recent expenses, as you know, with COVID, it's cost us a lot more to employ clinical people. That includes EMS and paramedics, as well as basically the rest of the hospital that we have. Our expenses for 2022 is 1.2 million. So 1.2 million in expenses, 900,000 in cash, gives us a deficit of about $300,000. So when you look at the subsidy for the county, the county was paying 85, the other entities, Cisco at 65, Eastland, the city at 65, and EMS at 65, that's just not enough to cover our deficit anymore. And so when you look at the request that we're making for Eastland County, that would go up from 85 to 104,000, $104,200, about a 22% increase. Along with that, Cisco, Eastland, and Eastland Memorial would pay more as well to go to about 79,400. That then should take us back to basically a breakeven on the operations, covering the 1.2 million dollars in expenses.
Ron, I'll play devil's advocate here for just a minute. On the ARPA funds that we gave to the hospital from the county to the hospital, were any of those funds used for EMS personnel?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you know how much was given to EMS personnel?
No, sir, but I can find that for you.
Okay. I understand it costs more to operate things, but there was an increase, at least a one-time increase in funding from the county
Yes.
to the hospital and to EMS.
Yes, and so the funding that we received from y'all went to salaries and wages for the hospital, and I can break out the part for EMS.
Which also included EMS.
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay. How much was that, Laura? Wasn't it about 200?
Yes.
200,000? But that didn't actually go to the operation, that went to the personnel for doing what they needed to do during COVID.
Correct.
Keeping up with everything that was in there during COVID.
Yes. It went for, basically, the cost of increases that we have with the staff that we had at the hospital to keep us and people employed at the hospital.
Keep going. Well, and I'm sure this is gonna come up, so I'll just throw it out there as well. The hospital and EMS pay for dispatch services to the county, and I don't think we've gone up in that period of time to the hospital, I don't think. If we did, it was a long time ago.
It's been years.
Since we've gone up on dispatch services. That the county's collecting from the entities as far as the hospital part, and, you know, your situation, you got the hospital, EMS kind of together, working together. So I fully understand the cooperative part of that, because we do the cooperative part of dispatch as well. We have different entities that tie into that.
Yeah, Judge Fields, we want to be just as, you know, good a partner as we can be, and so what's fair needs to be what's fair. Both on our end, pay more if that's the case, as well as the proposal we have for you guys.
Well, we didn't put any kind of an increase in dispatch for any of the entities this year, we just left it alone. And our, the county's part, probably like the hospital's part, if it's more, the county just pays more. The entity's part stays about the same and has been for quite some time. Have you discussed this with the other city councils?
We haven't, yeah.
Sir?
Board members, we have, not council members.
No, I mean with the cities, the two cities that pay in.
Only at the co-op, sir.
Sir?
Only at the co-op meeting.
Okay, you haven't talked with the two cities about this, so you don't know if they're willing to pay the extra, moving from 65,000 to 79,400? Okay. Are you, I don't want to get in the middle of your business, but are you gonna also contact them about the increase amount?
Yes, sir, it'll end up looking like a package deal.
Okay.
I think it's gonna have to be, we either one approves it or none approves it.
Okay, okay. Commissioners?
You just said that if they don't agree, y'all aren't gonna do it, basically, if one city don't agree to do it?
Well, we wouldn't do it this year, but we'd be back in front of the court next year for certain.
Yes, sir. So more or less, everybody's gonna have to agree before y'all go with it then?
Yes, sir, I don't want to start a war between the entities and the co-op.
Yeah. Well, and the problem is, is just like us, we've, our budgets, just today will be it, as far as I know, we'll be pretty close to have our budget set already.
You're a little late in the process for this.
Yeah, you're way late in the process on budgets for us.
And it wouldn't, it wouldn't make a lot of sense for us to go up on dispatch, and then y'all to go up the same, it's just like money out of one pocket to the other pocket. So if we didn't go up in dispatch fees, that's like a wash, you're not getting an increase on dispatch fees, and we're not paying extra for EMS fees.
How much are the dispatch fees? I do not recall that on paper.
I don't have it for me, do you have?
Do you have your budget with you?
Yeah.
We contract with the five cities for dispatch, Cisco, College, and the hospital. So those are the entities that we use for dispatch services. It may be in the dispatch, it may be in the co-op.
Co-op.
So.
Yeah, it's a cooperative dispatch.
Page 77.
Seems. And what is the hospital paying currently?
The hospital is paying 22,000.
Okay. Gentlemen, we have a proposal here before us, what is your opinion?
I'm gonna say it's too late in the year for us, Judge, we're too close to finishing everything. That's my two cents.
Do you think it'd be possible to look at it next year?
Absolutely.
Yeah, earlier.
And we start, we do our budget workshop usually about the second week of June, if things continue next year like they have for a long time. So probably somewhere in May, you need to make a presentation about what the budget's gonna be or what your request is.
Okay, it'll be on our calendar this afternoon.
All right, good deal.
All right, so thank you all.
Okay, gentlemen, with that, anybody make a motion to increase? Okay, that died for lack of a motion.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. And I understand. And now we have item number five, which is annual agri-life report by Dr. Donald Kim, District 8, Texas A&amp;M Agri-Life Extension District Administrator, followed by Amy O'Brien-Glynn and some other guy I don't recognize. TJ, oh, it's TJ, there he is. Pull up a chair. Let's get Amy a chair. I don't mind if TJ stands, but let's get Amy a chair. We like to pick on TJ. You might have noticed that?
I've heard her not stand behind me, though.
After five or six years, we like doing that.
Look at that ugly mugshot.
Well, as Judge said, my name's Donald Kim, I'm the District Extension Administrator with Texas A&amp;M Agri-Life Extension Service here in District 8, located at Stephenville. This is my annual visit on behalf of the Extension Service to let you know how much we appreciate the support you provide the program here in Eastland County. Without that support, we definitely wouldn't be able to have the program that we have, we wouldn't be able to have TJ and Amy and the work that they do here in the community assisting adult clientele as well as youth. On the front of my newsletter, I always highlight something that goes on across all 21 of my counties in District 8. This year, we're back on 4H and wanted to highlight District 4H participation and involvement. You can see as far as scholarships are concerned, it's been a couple of years since Eastland County had 4Hers receive 4H Foundation scholarships, but we're in a lull of senior-age individuals in 21 and 22, but that doesn't take away from the quality of youth that are here. But in this past June, at State 4H Roundup, the numbers you see there are 2021, where 36 youth from District 8 brought back 421,500. This past year in June, at State 4H Roundup, we had 34 youth bring back 435,000 back to District 8. Then you can see the quality of youth here in District 8. There's roughly about 5,906,000 4Hers in District 8, which is in the top three out of all 12 districts in the state. Then you can see here on 4H Project Works and contests, you can see our big five projects in District 8 include Ag and Livestock, Family Community Health, Leadership, Natural Resources, and Science, Technology, Engineering, and Math STEM. In the Ag and Natural Resources, you can see the different contests. Those numbers are the participation at our district contests. Family Community Health, the Fashion Show, Fashion Storyboard, Food Challenge, Food Show, you can see the number of participants there. Leadership and Personal Development, you can see those contests, Leaders for Life, very similar to our parliamentary procedure contests in FFA. Our SURGE, our Leadership, it's one of the biggest in, out of all 12 districts, and then you can see Roundup, Record Books, and so forth. And I'll get into some individual Eastland County information on the back, but there in some of these categories, there's Eastland County youth that have shined, not only at the county, not only at the district level, but at the state and national level as well. District 8 SURGE, which is our Leadership Lab, that's the premier leadership event for our senior-age 4H members, which are ninth grade and above, and this is an event that's held in June every year, focusing on leadership development. At this event, those 4H members that attend, they elect a district council, District 4H Council. That is included in a chairman, vice chairman, and then several other 10 altogether positions that help manage and determine the direction of the 4H program in District 8. I will have you know that the chairman of this district council that got elected in June is from Eastland County. So the top spot in our youth officers is from Eastland County, and that's a big accomplishment. Many, all the counties in District 8 shoot to get that chairman position, and TJ and Amy working with the youth were able to get an individual that got voted and selected as the chairman. Not only did she get selected as a District 8 chairman, but there's two to three representatives from all 12 districts that are considered the State 4H Council. There's three or four officers that are elected out of those 36 or 40 that come to State Council, and our Eastland County 4Her was voted for the secretary position at state level. So not only did she get a position on the district council, but she got a position on the state council. So, super good, that's the quality of youth here in Eastland County. On the back, more specific to Eastland County, Ag and Natural Resources under TJ, a snapshot, the small and new landowner program that TJ started with several different, it's a series of programs focusing on different ag production management skills and different production practices, whether it be ag law, insurance, oil for fertility, brush and weed control. There's 17 landowners participated in that, provided private applicator trainings for those individuals that need their pesticide license, a couple multi-county programs, the Cross Timbers Land Management Symposium that Eastland County's a part of, the District 8 Farm and Ranch Seminar, where Eastland and Comanche go together, TJ assists Mike in putting that on. And then y'all know it firsthand, unfortunately, when those disasters come around, the judge working with agents and putting in the STAR requests for the animal supply point, the veterinarian team coming in and assist, and y'all were able to see what Extension can do in times of need that, when a disaster occurs. So you hate for those to come around, but we're there when those times come. And I want to commend Amy and TJ and the job that they did during that time with animal supply point, and then Amy with what she did in coordinating some of the other stuff. Family. Family and Consumer Sciences, Amy provides leadership to the Extension Education Clubs, the TIA Clubs with 14 members, and the volunteer hours they contribute. If you multiply those hours times that $29 estimated value for a volunteer hour, that's a good chunk that allows Amy an outreach of her efforts. Drug and alcohol awareness, you can see the different programs with the different school districts, the 1,200 youth in middle school and high school, the 800, 800 high school and middle school youth. You can see the different programs that were used, focusing on drug and alcohol awareness. Amy's work with the food pantries, and then also the Central Texas Early Childhood Education Conference, that's a partnership with Tarleton State University, Amy's a part of that, providing continuing education hours for our childcare providers. 4H Youth Development, we've got the three clubs here in the county, 89 youth, and I'm proud to say that's 110% enrollment growth from the year before, so that is, that right there is 21, 22, so we're 110% plus of the 2020, 21 4H year, so.
I attended the banquet down at Rising Star, and it was 100 and something kiddos people.
130 something.
130 something people. It was probably the largest one we've had in.
I know, since I've been around, I think, yep.
It was very well done and very well attended.
And then you can see the 4H Ag and Livestock Projects, how many youth competed with how many projects, and then 13 youth participated in Plan ID, Ag Product Identification, the 4H FCH Project, 16 youth participated in the Food Challenge, 12 in the Fashion Show and Duds to Dazzle, 4H Leadership and Personal Development, 11 youth competed with Record Books Incoming, and we talked about our state representative from Eastland County, and then the Shooting Sports Participation. Also, one last thing I want to highlight, as far as more justification of the quality of youth, we have ambassador programs in the state, whether it be livestock, whether it be healthy youth ambassadors, whether it be photography, and Eastland County has two healthy Texas ambassadors, one 4H Photography Ambassador and one 4H Livestock Ambassador. They go get trained and certified, and then they're charged with coming back and assisting the agents, providing some education opportunities here in the county. Also, not this past June, but at state contest last in June of '21, Eastland County had the first-place public speaker at state contest, and also had a state-winning record book, which qualified that individual to participate in a national trip. So there's good things happening in Eastland County because of TJ and Amy and y'all's support. Without that support, these things wouldn't be able to happen to the level that they do. So thank you very much. On a selfish note, I always promote the conference, Judge will be happy due to scheduling. Snafu in Waco with MCC, we had to move it to Meridian, so we'll be in Meridian at the Civic Center on Wednesday, November the 2nd.
That is a little bit closer.
It is closer, yeah.
I will, I will guarantee.
I won't get lost trying to find that emergency center down there outside of Waco.
I will guarantee that lunch, you know? We always end up with a good program, but that lunch, I'll put my neck on the line for that, so. And I think y'all for your attendance of it, and you're definitely welcome, the packet should go out, the agenda's set, I've got some good topics, I think, with the help of the committee. One, I've asked Judge Fields and Judge Chambers from Somerville County to speak on the steps and the protocol they went through to get agri-life extension involved in assisting with those animal supply points. And also, just for your information, I was at a meeting in College Station about three weeks ago, unified coordinating response, but it was emergency management, and they're going to use Eastland and Somerville County situations as a protocol and send it out to agents and that in times of need, here's the steps and how we get it all started. So, thank y'all very much, I appreciate your support.
Gentlemen, questions, comments, Dr. Kim, or TJ, or Amy?
I've got something for TJ.
We're not held accountable for what he says.
Does he get to go to the conference so we can point him out to everybody?
Yes, he is welcome to attend, if y'all want him to drive you down there.
No, he's talking about TJ, he never shows up.
Well, I only ask certain ones.
Well, I understand that.
But no, all the agents, if y'all invite them to come, they're all welcome to attend.
He just can't drive. I've tried that before, that didn't work out well.
I invite both of y'all to be there at the District 8 Convention in Meridian.
Sure. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Dr. Kim, and thank you very much for your program, what you do for us. It's pretty incredible. I've been here long enough now to watch those kids go through that 4H program from little to being grown and out in the world, it's incredible.
Well, it helps, I mean, it's because of your support and then being able to have TJ and Amy.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank y'all.
Good deal, thank y'all. Okay. And next up, we have item number six, which is discuss, consider approving funding for Desdemona VFD from the American Rescue Plan, from the ARPA Plan, and could you give us your name, sir?
James Bivens.
James what?
James Bivens.
James Bivens. And James, you represent Desdemona VFD today?
I will be standing in for Chief Mark.
Okay, good deal. So your application here is for personal protective equipment, turnout coats, pants, various things that go along with that for enough to, looks like all of this together, you've got a cost of $30,743.79, and of course, your department is gonna be paying for the over and above what we allocate for $25,000. So your department is saying that if we give you the $25,000, your department will put in $57.43 to cover the overage, right? Okay, all right. So gentlemen, we've had this taken through Langford Community Management, they've made the approval on it. Any questions or comments? All right.
Judge, one thing I did, because they furnished the quotes, I did also go ahead and go on the SAM system, and the company, which is North American Fire Equipment Company Incorporated, is a registered entity.
Okay. Good deal. Then with that, do we approve the spending of the funds out of ARPA? Then with that, do we approve the spending of the funds out of ARPA for Desdemona VFD's request?
I'll make the motion.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well. It's unanimous. When are y'all going to try to order those coats, Mr. Bivens?
I know we.
Either the equipment, not the coats, but all the other.
We just decided for all of our gear, for all the gentlemen, ladies there in the fire department.
Okay.
We've actually had them come down and do this and do various different gears replaced.
Right. Okay, okay. Uh, how do you want this?
Would the court also approve payment where treasurer's office can go ahead and pay them?
Okay. So, let's have a motion to go ahead and pay from the county ARPA funds to Desdemona VFD when they are ready to be paid.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same side? Okay, Beretta Key is the auditor. Christina Doddrell back there is the treasurer. Those are the two people you need to work with about getting the receipts sent up to us so we can make that payment out of the funds, okay? All right, good deal. Thank you very much for being here.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right.
Would you sign these two?
Okay. All right. You might want to date those. I didn't put a date on them, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, that takes us to item number seven, which is discuss, consider the county contract for firefighting services with the city of Eastland. And I was contacted about this by Eastland Fire Chief Joe Williamson. So, is the mayor and JJ also going to talk to us?
If they want to, they can. I do want to talk to you.
Okay.
I'm going to be the one kind of lead this deal. I've asked Joe to get us on the agenda if he could. And I appreciate y'all giving us the opportunity to be here. This is not just about the contract, which that is a piece of the discussion, but it's got to do, I think, with firefighting services in the county, which I think falls under your, especially you as our leader in a county, but with your commission as well, about how we do things, what's going on, and how we do business as a fire service, in the county fire service itself. We, Joe, I know the comment was made with the contract had been good for sixteen years and that kind of stuff, and that's fine, well and good. Times have changed just a little bit in the last sixteen years. And, you know, Joe's been accused of, when he, when he got here, Joe moved. He's an Eastland boy. You talk about homegrown guys. He's an Eastland boy, grew up here, came back to retire, was involved in the fire service. He'd never intended to be our fire chief. We appreciate him taking that role now. He's been accused of trying to take, he's not trying to take over anything. Joe comes with amazing credentials and a lot of knowledge about fire service and how we're supposed to be doing things. And he is raising those flags, and I'm hearing him, our city manager. We happen to have a city manager we hired that was fire chief in Vernon, you know? So, we've got a little fire service expertise sitting in Eastland. And these guys have been around along with all of our fire departments. And the jobs that do, they do a very good job. They proved that back in March with the firefighting that they did and the job that they did, not to lose a life. We know we lost a deputy, but that was the deputy doing their job as far as our firefighters go. And our people, they did an outstanding job all the way around, and you cannot say enough good about them. One of the things, I want to praise Joe Williamson and let you know where I sit. I know very little about fire service. You got a fire, you put it out. I mean, you know, this is, this is not.
They call it putting the red stuff on the red stuff.
That's exactly right. One of the things that happened that I think everybody needs to be aware of back in March, when you, when you call in the cavalry and you bring in the forest service or you bring in whoever, they generally come in and take over. They didn't come in and take over in that fire because Joe Williamson had his ducks lined up, and they left Joe in command of that fire. I think that says a lot about his credentials and what his knowledge is of firefighting. And I think we need to listen to him when we have the opportunity as he's telling us and telling us what's going on and what we need to do. We, we, I think that's paramount in understanding his credentials. And he's got a lot of connections with the fire service people, as you probably already have found out, with him dealing with people trying to get fires put out or call in the helicopters or the planes or whoever we're trying to call in to help put out county fires or whatever. So, so that's, that's a great asset for us to have in Eastland. We're very blessed to have that in Eastland County. The fire, Joe's plan to stop the fire out here on four ninety as it headed toward Breckenridge was a well-executed, dangerous plan that twelve brush trucks lined up across Highway Six out there at four ninety and put that fire out, knocked that fire down. The house was put out by a fire. We know Mark Blalock Jr., whose dad lives here in Eastland County. Y'all probably know he was a firefighter as well. So, you know, we're very blessed with where we are. The reason why I think this is really important, we have discussions and understand command and control and the things that go on. I don't know what y'all were doing ninety years, ninety days ago today. Can anybody tell me what you're doing ninety days ago, ninety days ago today? Ninety days ago today, U Valley, Texas, was it will be the most tragic thing that can happen when that school was under attack. You go back and investigate, and they're investigating those. The Department of Justice is investigating that incident. The Texas Rangers are investigating that incident. The command and control broke down terribly in that incident. The school district had a plan for active shooter training. It wasn't followed at all. So, there's a lot of really tragic things. But that's where you hear about command and control. And I want to know is our command and control where it needs to be? And I think that's the discussion we need to have going forward. It's for the county, and I think that comes from you. I think you, you overseeing this commission court, but you, as you direct that or whoever you put to chair that for the county. But we need to get all of our fire departments on the same plan. The dispatch is an integral part. I'll tell you a story that I was told that I think is really important. And the law enforcement uses ten code, ten-four, good buddy, ten-twenty, you know, all that good stuff they use. I've been told there's even more than one set of ten codes. And that's things that need to be cleared up. But there was a fire up in Fort Worth up on one twenty-one, or car accident, fatal car accident up on one twenty-one in Fort Worth. And the law enforcement guy walked by the firefighter and said the driver's twelve. So, the firefighters get up there to extricate the body, and it's not a twelve girl. Well, twelve means he's dead in ten code world. The driver's dead is what he said, but that's not the language we use. Firefighters use common language and speak and understand, hey, the guy's deceased. This is, there's no code for that, that he's deceased. And the codes are different. And I think we need to move to where we're all on the same page. And our law enforcement, you know, we've changed radios now, making things a bit more complicated. We've got digital radios here and all those things. And those are things we can work through. But we're here today. I've made it clear to our city manager, fire chief, new police chief sitting over here. Tim Pitts, as you know, will be coming to work for us November first, and you get the other one. But we, I've made it clear, we don't want a U Valley in Eastland County. And I think we have to work very hard. And they've just done active shooter training at our elementary school here and the elementary school in Cisco went very well. Some of the guys that were involved in that were here today. I know Officer Pitts, Trooper Pitts was involved in that. And they're going to have another one eventually, as soon as they can put it together, that will involve firemen, involve the entire, it's the full scenario. It's the full, it's not just go down the hall and put this guy down and that kind of stuff. And in those active shooter training, if you're not familiar with that now, they use little bullets that break the skin now. This is, this is real active training and things, the little things. I mean, not going to kill anybody, but they'll break the skin. You know you've been shot. It's not like the deal we did growing up. You didn't hit me, you know? No, it's, it's real. And this active shooter, and I did witness, it wasn't from Eastland County, so I'll clear that up. But I witnessed one guy froze up. I watched him down the hall. He froze up. He wouldn't, the guy leading had to backseat escort him into the room. It's real. It's, and that's why they're doing this, because that's what happened, I think, in U Valley. You had two officers outside the school. Had a chance to put this guy down before everyone went inside the school and didn't do it. The school's unlocked. The classroom was never locked. They could have gone in and got him. I mean, you can talk about it all day long. I want us in Eastland County to do everything we can do to make Eastland the best, to do the job right. All of the practice, we've got the contract, and that's one of the things that we, that's on the table to talk about because some of this, we want to get cleared up in the contract so all of us understand what the plan is and how we all work together. And everybody's on the same page. If they're, you know, we, we can't have, it's like a football team or sports or any kind of team sport. You can't have a fire chief in Eastland get mad at the fire chief in Rangers, and we're not going to go help them anymore. That's not the answer. That's when the county judge says, oh, that's the wrong answer. Let's have a meeting today.
We have done that.
I, I understand. And that, and we can't have guys, you know, I don't care how much they like each other. That's not, it's not about who they like and don't like. It's about fire service. And when it comes time and the kickoff happens, then we all go and they do it. In our fire, I've heard a deal a long time ago, and I've lived by it all my life. Take out the bad, put in better and polish what you've got. We're here today to talk about polishing what we've got and make this absolutely seamless and everybody pulling the same direction and going down the same path and doing what they need to do to get this job done. And that's what it's about. The contract, just the contract's up and it's time, let's, let's get an audience with the, with the county court and let's start this process. I don't know, I'm not here today to try to fix the contracts here. There's a lot of things we need to change. Let's do it. I think we need to have either another meeting or y'all look at the information and us come back and either in a separate type of meeting, and I don't know how y'all do that, or we can do it in this meeting, go through the bullet points and talk about what all needs to be looked at and get a microscope on it and make sure, and get all the fire chiefs. I mean, it may be something y'all hear the discussion and what needs to be done. And then we have a meeting with all the fire chiefs, get everybody on the same page.
Let me stop you there just a moment now. Russ drafted this for us probably fifteen years ago. And then it went out to all the cities and was negotiated back and forth between Russ, who was the district attorney at that time, and legal representative for the county. And then the legal representative for the cities looked at it, made changes. It was a negotiated deal and came back. And that's what we've used all this time for what we call the wildfire suppression or contracting for fire services outside the incorporated areas. So, has legal counsel, have you talked with legal counsel about the changes that you want to post to make?
That can come once we understand the changes and what needs to be put in this contract. And then we'll let the legalese massage it and get it where they want to be. I mean, when you talk about contract for firefighter services or for fire suppression, are we talking about the only thing y'all support is fire suppression? Or do you, the only thing you support?
That's what we are obligated to pay for is fire suppression. We don't pay for lift assists or EMS. We already have EMS system that we pay for. Two systems, actually, one from the COOP, one from the Ranger. But the contract is for firefighting outside the city limits, basically. That's what it's for. And to go to your point about who does what in emergency, that's pretty clearly defined with instant command, the National Response Management System, those ICS classes that, well, you've already had them too. We've all had them if you're involved with it. It tells you how that is to be. That's a national situation. So, when somebody comes in from out of state like they did back during the wildfires, yes, Joe, it is. But, oh, it, it goes in, and that way, when the people that come in from somewhere of the location, they know that we're all compliant with ICS and NIMS because that's the operating, we call it the framework. National Response Framework is how that came to be back after nine eleven in New York because they discovered then that the fire department and the police departments weren't able to physically communicate over their radios with each other. So, out of that horrible thing was born a really good, robust instant command system where we all do this training to know what happened. I don't know what happened in U Valley, but something went really, really, really far off the tracks from just what I've heard and read. So, that's right. We need to have that in place. But that's really more of a situation that National Response Management System, Management System, Instant Command System, all those are clearly outlined from FEMA as to what we're supposed to follow. I don't know that the contract that you're talking about with us and that we have with the other seven fire departments, I'm not sure why we need that in there. I mean, it could be referenced.
Refer, yeah.
As to say, here's what, here's what we need, here's what we expect. Joe and I talked about this last week a little bit. Here's what you expect from the county, and here's what the county expects from the cities that contract with us to take care of the, the fire that we have outside. So, beyond that, you know, we, we do plan to increase the funding, change the dates. I always try to get those contracts out in September so that they can be circulated out to eight fire departments. And all the dispatch contracts go out as well, and then the two EMS contracts. So, if we're going to do something, we probably need to get with it and make it happen, or we're going to be out of the contract period, which starts over on October the first. I will say when we applied for the FMAG grant, and most of the fire departments in the county had applied for the, the federal Fire Management Assistance Grant. The very first thing they wanted from the state was, where is your MOU? Where's your interlocal with all the fire departments? Right here. So, we had that available for them because we've done it this way for all these years now. You know, does it need to be fine-tuned or whatever? Maybe. But I would sure want your legal counsel to look at it. And we'll have legal counsel look to any changes that you might have, that you might be suggesting to get some kind of negotiation, at least for the city of Eastland. And I will say that the city of Eastland, if I'm remembering correctly, and I think that's right, that's the only contract that we have with a city. The other contracts are with the fire department itself, not with the city. And there's a good reason for that because I think Lois Rockefeller was the attorney for the city way back there. And she made note that all the assets that were going to be used for firefighting outside the city limits of Eastland were titled in the city of Eastland's name. So, it said, that probably needs to be, the contract should be with the city of Eastland, not with Eastland Fire Department. So, beyond that, the other seven fire departments, of course, some of them don't even have a city anymore. The contract is basically with that VFD. So, I don't know if you want to change that or if there's something different about that. I think that's probably a good plan for the city of Eastland to leave it where it's the contract between the county of Eastland and the city of Eastland.
Yeah, that, that part of Eastland stays the same. That's not, I mean, that's not what we're talking about. And you, I gave you some bullet points, and that's why everybody's getting, having enough for everybody. And that's just the bullet points, what's in the contract that we raise a question, if you want to go through those real quick. And I'll just tell you why some of those are, I mean, the contract says the firefighting services. Well, firefighting services is defined in some of the legal documents that I'm sure Russ probably referred to. And firefighting services doesn't just talk about fire suppression. Firefighting services talks about much more than that. It's basically on any type of emergency call. And it's not just talking about fire. It also talks about prevention. You know, we get called to, to automobile accident down between Rising Star and Cisco, and we call in to help for that, or Cisco gets called out to go help for that, whatever happens. It may be an automobile accident, but that's a prevention of what could be a fire. You don't know what's going to happen until you get there. That's the problem in the fire service. It's not just about putting out a fire. It's when you talk about emergency services, and this says firefighting services. And I think if you go pull up the definition for that in the legal document set of reference here, you'll be surprised what it actually says because it's not just talking about firefighting, fire services, putting out a fire. There's more to it than that. The agreed, the city agreed to provide firefighting services. Part one says, the bottom of number one on part one says, "Without limits of any city or duly incorporated town within the Eastern County, Texas." Without any city limits or duly incorporated. To me, that says it's any, once I leave Eastland, we're under the county firefighting contract once we leave the city. I mean, that, that's the way I read that. Now, I'm not a legal guy, and we can sure get our legal people to look at that. You talk about a list of firefighting vehicles. Well, if we have a vehicle that gets involved in a fire and something happens, is it not considered, you know, part of this plan? I would tell you that all of our vehicles should be on that list. And we've got a command vehicle now. We've got the, whatever the other one, the call, we've got two vehicles that we use. And especially the command vehicle goes out. It's not a firefighting apparatus, other than the fact it's going to command and control from that vehicle, which is a very huge asset, as we're finding out every day. So, this list of vehicles, I can make the argument that every vehicle in our fire service could be involved in a fire. It may be used out there to. It may be used out there to, to block off the interstate. It may be used to block off highway six to keep people from driving into carbon in the middle of a fire. And, you know, I know we've had two or three people that got caught up in the smoke, uh, and, and could have very well lost their lives in that situation. So it's really important. Uh, again, uh, talk about insured. When you talk about you pay for vehicles that are insured, uh, count number four. Uh, county shall assume and hold city harmless for vehicles that are insured or uninsured. And it says down here, it's got to be insurance. So we don't, I don't understand in this contract, what are you paying for? If we've got it insured, what's the county liable for?
Well, we do pay, we do pay for workers' comp.
I know you pay for workers' comp. That's not, and that's a, that's another question. When do you pay for workers' comp?
When there's an incident that somebody gets hurt off of a truck.
Okay, where though? In, in, if Eastland firefighter leaves the city of Eastland and we're in Cisco, is that covered under your workman's comp because we're outside of Eastland?
Well, that's more or less a mutual aid. If it happened inside the city of Cisco, that's really an issue between you and the city of Cisco. But if it happened, and one year, if it happened outside the city limits of any town, one year or two, we had more workers' comp paid out to firemen or firefighters than we did paid out to our own employees. And that was about ten or twelve years ago. It's been a while. Now, I know one time we had more comp claims from fire departments than we did from our own internal departments.
Okay.
But if you're, if you're doing a mutual aid with another city, I would think that city would be responsible for workers' comp. Unless the workers' comp is carried with their, when they travel somewhere and it's go like you would have a automobile insurance, goes with the automobile.
The call to the fire we just had back in March, uh, it piqued my interest and asked that question. We don't know the answer. I know we had Brown County very involved and they were here when the governor was here, you know, Brown County was here. If we go into another county, is there a mutual aid agreement between counties? How are we covered then? I mean?
The only mutual aid agreement between counties, there's really not one. It's that every county judge in the state of Texas is emergency management director for the county. That's under chapter four eighteen of the Texas government code. So we don't have mutual aid agreements with Brown County or Callahan County. That's really an issue that revolves around the state setting up the mutual assistance. Um, what is that called where they bring in? It's through, it's through the cog. One of the fire chiefs here helped me that mutual. TIFMS, there you go. That's the Texas Interstate Fire Maintenance System. So when they, when, when somebody needs somebody, that's what they call, they call TIFMS. There's also one called the MAC, I think, mutual aid from West Cog. And that's where that comes in. It doesn't come from the county. Like if the city of Eastland is called to just, you know, Stevens County just up the road, the county's not involved with that because they're just passing through the county to get to where the incident is. That's between the, the, whoever responds up there and needs extra help. The state does have some responsibility for the coordination of that, which is where the Texas Division of Emergency Management comes in as a coordinating authority for that response request.
Okay. So Stevens County is one of them. That's the reason why it came up to me was the Stevens County. I knew about Brown County being here. But that fire, if we hadn't have stopped that fire going up highway, uh, four oh nine or four ninety, uh, we'd have been in Stevens County pretty quick. Or chasing that fire one. I don't know what would have happened. That would have been.
But Stevens County wasn't involved with it. That was your question was what happens if they go into another county?
Well, we, you would have been involved while we were out there on four ninety fighting that fire. And then we go around one eighty-three and head towards Stevens County trying to fight that fire. We get into Stevens County. The state's involved in that at that time is what you're telling me.
Well, actually the state would be involved way before that, just like they were.
Not every fire, not every fire that deal. We could have a fire north of Eastland that we go, uh, we're out there fighting it in the county and the state's really not involved yet. But we go into Stevens County trying to put that fire out. But that's some kind of a state agreement.
The way that works is the state wants the first responders locally to respond. And then once they get close to being overwhelmed, that is when the state says, okay, we want to come in and help you. And they don't typically try to take over. But they do have assets that we don't have, like airplanes that scoop water out of lakes and bulldozers that can be activated at a moment's notice. The state comes in at that point, once local responders or I call them and say, we need bulldozers and transports and we need, uh, aircraft with water dropping capabilities. That's where that comes in.
Okay. Yeah, that's, uh, that's just because of the, the, the things you have about workman's comp and, and, and that type of deal. That's really not clear in a contract about what workman comp does and when you pay and don't pay. And that's what I always want to make sure we have.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Get your legal staff to look at what your request is. And we're going to have a meeting, let's see, we've got three meetings next month. So I think it's on the sixth. We've got a meeting, special meeting on September the sixth, one on the twelfth and one on the twenty-sixth. I typically try to send out the contracts once we adopt the budget, which we're going to adopt the budget on the sixth. If legal, if your legal staff and any other departments that want to look at that, want to send us something to look at, I will have, I'll probably get Brad to do it because it'd be quicker than trying to send it off to our legal counsel in Austin. And let him look at it and see if there's something that needs to be changed from the county's perspective. And him being the former county judge, he'd be able to pick that up right quick, I think.
Okay.
Uh, you want to do that?
Well, I'll modify what you said. I'm not big on sending something to her. Until we all know what we're asking for, I don't try to involve our county, our, uh, legal counsel because they pay us, charge us about a penny. You know, I mean, about a minute, you know, for every, everything we do, they charge about a minute for everything they touch, even a phone call or anything else. So I, I think we need to understand what we can and can't do, what we do and don't need to do.
Well, let me stop you right there because the legal department that you use is going to be able to tell us what you can and can't do. That's why I like to use the legal department first. And yeah, they do cost more. Uh, but that would also get it styled exactly as it, as you guys want it within the code that we have to operate in, which is the Texas government code, chapter four eighteen as far as emergency management. That's really where all that, it's where the whole system comes out of. Four eighteen of government code.
So you want us to rewrite this contract and send you what we think it ought to look like? Is that what you're telling me?
No, I said you need to send it to your attorney and let them look at it and give them your concerns. And then send that to me or to us. We're going to have three meetings coming up shortly. Send it to me. Just go ahead and send it to me. I'll let, uh, Russ, I mean, I'll let Brad look at it and decide what we can and can't do under the government code. I just think that makes sense to have the attorneys look at it and say, here's what we need to do. Here's what you can do. They'll give you probably a list of options and we'll be able to put something together if you think it's worthwhile and making changes. Now, I will say on the record that Eastland is the only fire department out of the eight that has come to me about with any kind of an issue about it. So I, you know, if y'all, if y'all want some changes on it, it's just ink on paper. We can make some changes.
Well, I don't answer, I don't answer for the other fire departments, for the other communities.
But as a county judge, I've got to take care of eight departments and eight different agendas and eight different, you know, expectations and resources.
I told you, that's why we're here. We think command and control and these things are falling to your purview. I, I agree a hundred percent. But the contract with us and the city, and, and we want to make sure that we've got in place what we need to do our job and to get everybody else on the same page. So we know, just like command and control and how they, uh, you know, we get a fire goes from Eastland. I think the normal practice is command and control, whoever gets there, who in there first, they've got the ball.
They have instant command unless they hand it off to somebody else or they get so tired they can't handle it anymore.
That, and that's all, and, and all those things are in place. I'm sure somewhere.
Yeah.
But where?
That's in instant command. That's in the ICS system.
But where, I think Eastland needs to have their, that plan drawn up and all those pieces put together into a plan. Instead of going refer and so the people you get out on a fire, they know exactly what they're doing.
But they, mayor, they, they already have that instant command system. It, there's a definite plan. Now, does it break down? Obviously in U Valley it did. But instant command system very clearly lines out everything you can think of.
Well, U Valley, I think, broke down in their school district. We don't need to get into all that with the breakdown in the school district. I don't think that's.
I don't think it'd be a good idea for you guys to try to rewrite instant command system.
I don't want to rewrite it. I want to make sure we're doing it.
Okay.
I'm not saying rewrite anything. We're not wanting to change that stuff. I want to make sure we're doing it. They had it all in place in U Valley. No one made sure they did. That's my point. The breakdown in U Valley was a failure for the people to do what they were supposed to be doing. I want to make sure that we're following those plans.
Something happened that was way outside the normal scope.
It was a sad, sad day in U Valley, Texas. And that's what, and that's what I want to make sure that we're all following and understand that plan. And when you get to a fire scene, you're not having to debate about who's doing what. Everybody knows. And we need some type of a tool, in my opinion. You get volunteer firefighters.
So are you saying there's a debate now when somebody rolls up, the first responders roll up? Is there a debate now about who's instant command?
I think that has happened. Yes, sir.
Really?
About, yes. I think we've had to spend time discussing who's in charge of what instead of putting out a fire. Yes, sir.
It's not supposed to happen that way.
I, and I'm sitting here for what reason? That's what, that's what we want to get to.
I had my training a long time ago, but I very well remember that the first person on the scene that's got some kind of supervisory, supervisory control is instant commander unless and until that person is.
Turn it over or unable. And, and you know, you can have, you take that fire we just had. I mean, obviously they were out there for days, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Instant command, you know, that would have been somebody else and, and, and that could have been, you know, it would have been brutal.
Well, that's not a bad idea to check up and make sure that you are following instant command. You know, you could probably get, you could probably get Greg Gott or somebody to come and look at your individual plan, your emergency management.
I think our eight fire chiefs, I think our eight fire chiefs and you can just sit down and do that.
Well, I think somebody at the state level needs to do that because that's where you're going to get the majority of the big resources. Like the big strike team that came in that set up at the football field.
I understand.
That came in because of instant command said, we've now gotten to a point that we need more resources. Then we get to another point, we need more resources. Pretty soon we've got resources on both sides of the road out here. Because our instant command says, here's what you do next. Here's, well, here's does what. This is, uh, the management for this part of the operation. This is response. This is recovery. This is planning. This is mitigation. All those kind of go in a sequence.
I, I understand how the design and, and what, and people a whole lot smarter than me obviously have done that and, and put that plan together. I want to make sure we're following that plan in Eastland County.
Yeah.
Like it's supposed to be done. It's not a debate out on the fire scene about who's in charge of what and what we're doing.
Are you still having chief meetings? Do you know?
They are still having them. I don't know when they are. Joe and them do that.
Joe's still having, you're not, Joe's shaking his head no?
There's been meetings scheduled with the, the lack of attendance.
Okay. Well, I would think that the chief meetings would be the great place for them to get together and say, here's what happened. Do a hot wash after the event, not finger pointing, but just saying, here's what needs to be done in the future. And that's really not anything that I get involved with. Really, I, I just don't.
Well, we, we are not trying to take over anything. Joe's not trying to take over anything. We're trying to make sure we've got all the Ts crossed and the Is dotted.
Okay. Well, from this point forward then, what would you like to do to progress since you don't like my idea of contacting the attorney?
Well, I don't, I don't say that I don't like it. I just, that's not my first step. I think we need to get the ducks lined up about what needs to be in there. And we can go to our attorneys. They're here. What we're going to do to the contract. And they're going to say, okay, do it. And we're not doing monumental changes. I think it's like dispute resolution. What kind of dispute resolution for the problem with the fire departments? How do we fix that? You're paying them thirty thousand dollars. Like you make a phone call and say, y'all come to my office. We need to talk. I mean, really, I mean, dispute resolution just comes to resolve this right now. We can't have fire departments or anybody else out here moaning and groaning, but they're not getting their whatever and.
Well, mayor, only one department is, to use your words, moaning and groaning. The other seven aren't. So does it behoove me to bring all of them together?
This one's not moaning and groaning. This one knows that there's not things being followed per the plan that we've talked about. And we want to make sure that those plans are put in place.
Well, our only plan is a wildfire contract for the unincorporated areas.
That's not a wildfire contract. That's an emergency services contract. You need to go look up what that means.
I don't think I need to go look up what that means. I've been doing this job for sixteen years.
I understand. And it's not just fire suppression.
And I don't need to be told by you what I need to go look up.
Well, you keep using that for a term and yes, you do.
Well, it is a term.
It is a term, but it's not fire suppression. Go look it up. There's more to it. It's involved, it's involved in all types of emergencies. That's our concern, Judge.
This, this is my deal on this. We don't have to do any of it. We do not have to provide any fire services whatsoever outside. We do not.
You don't provide any fire services outside.
That's right. We don't have to contract. We don't have to pay for nothing. We pay more money in our county to the voluntary fire departments than anybody around us.
And we appreciate that.
Okay? That is what we choose to do. We don't have to do any of it.
What's your point?
The point is if y'all don't want to do it, don't do it.
Nobody said we don't want to do it. We'll sign the contract. That's not the issue. We're trying to get it cleaned up so we don't have a U Valley Texas happen here. We want to make sure the ducks are lined up. That's all we're asking. And if you want us to go, I will go to our legal counsel and we'll come up with some type of a contract that, that looks like what we're talking about and y'all can look at it.
I'm going to ask my commissioners court, what do you want me to do on this matter? How do you want to proceed with it? Do you want to talk to our legal counsel? Do you want him to just go ahead and put something out for us? Or do you want to just go ahead and take the contract that we have now and go forward with? Those are the kind of options that I see. What do you want to do? And keep in mind, it's got to be done pretty much by the end of next month so that all the contracts can be circulated around. So y'all tell me what you want me to do as your presiding officer.
I would say keep the contract as it is.
Except add the thirty thousand instead of the twenty-three we're at now and change the date.
Yeah, we've already, we've already agreed to the thirty thousand.
We have.
I'm good with the way it is, Judge.
Well, there's two out of the three necessary votes right there.
More le- more or less what you're saying is, is you want somebody to be in charge when they get out there. And it sounds like to me that you're wanting Eastland fire department to be in charge.
No, 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 not at all. That's not, I want it to be clear that, that, the, the handoffs, the command and control handoff. Eastland does not, that's not the issue, but it's not a clear path right now. And all I want to do is clear the path. I want to get the bugs out of the kinks out of the system, take out the bad, put in better and polish what you got. I want to polish what we've got is all I'm saying. And, and that's not, Eastland is not wanting to be command and control for every fire in Eastern County at all. That's not the, the issue at all.
Mayor, do you mind if I throw JJ under the bus for just a minute?
JJ?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't care. He gets paid more than I do.
JJ, you've been fire services a long time. You've done all the ICS, all the NIMS training.
Yes.
You understand TIFMS, all of that. To throw you right directly under the bus, is there such an issue that it needs to be changed for the city of Eastland's contract? Or is there something else that needs to be done to make sure that ICS is being followed at the incident?
There's some things that need to be clarified in that contract. Yes. Because you start talking about TIFMS and NIMS and all that. That really doesn't come into play until you get to a top three incident. What we need to clear up, I feel as for Eastern County is the top fours and the top fives.
The big stuff?
No, 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 no. No, that's the small stuff. You, it's backwards. Big, big number is a, just a small incident and it goes up to your top ones, which is Katrina and Harvey and all that. There's just some things in there that I feel as though, we don't need to get attorneys about. We just want some stuff. That's why we made those bullet points, was to get a dialogue going. Not to blow everything out of the water is, we just want some clarification on some stuff. It's kind of like that workers' comp bill. Why Cisco on the hook if it's in their city? We shouldn't be back and forth. It doesn't say that. The way I read that contract is, once we leave the city limits of Eastland, they're in the county. There are no more city limits because that is an Eastland specific contract. That's what I'm saying.
Okay.
I, I don't, I, I just want a dialogue to go back and forth. Y'all may, there may be some bullets pointing there you can read and go, yep, that's why we do that. That is right here. That's it.
My bet is I don't understand why y'all don't want to go to your legal counsel and get it right the first time.
Well, we do. We, but, but, but.
Hold on a minute. Hold on. It's my turn. Still us saying, yeah, y'all say it this way and we say, no, we don't want to do it that way. Get your legal counsel to say, yeah, this is the way it needs to be. This is the law. This is the way we're going to do it. And then when we get ours to look at it and then we all agree, there it is. That's as simple as that.
I understand, I understand. I understand exactly what you're saying there. And, and I do agree to, with you to a point. But why involve lawyers? I mean, though, it shows to me to the people of Eastern County, Eastern, the county and the city can't work together.
We're going to involve lawyers one way or another. If we make, if we make a change to a contract, we're going to have somebody look at it.
Yes, sir.
That's not what I'm saying. Our legal counsel will be involved. We're not at a point where we know what we want yet.
Exactly.
What we can agree. We may come down and say, we want to do this. Y'all say, no, let's do this. They'll be agreeing with you. Let's fix this. And then let the attorney look at it. Let them rubber stamp it. Everybody happy.
Well, they may not rubber stamp it. They need to be involved. I like to involve them right at the first when we do something. We open a road, close a road, make a change here, do something, title war, whatever. I like those people to be involved directly from the beginning. That way we're not heading down this path and realize we can't go somewhere else.
If that's the way we want to do it, that is fine with me. I just see us going, we get it and we say, here's the contract. We want it to look like this. We send it to our legal people. They say, that's great. We give it to you. You give it to your legal Brad. And, and he looked at it and said, no, we can't do that. We have to do that. Now we're back and forth with the legal people. And, and we don't even, you know.
That's what we did sixteen, fifteen, sixteen years ago. We had the two legal parties, one for the county, one for each individual city. one for the county, one for each individual city. They went back and forth and made the contract workable. Now, granted, the laws may have changed, but the emergency management laws under four eighteen don't typically change much. So what was good back then might still be very, very usable now. Am I right, JJ?
Yes, but you used the key word there, much. And a little bit, it goes a long ways in the, a little change goes a long ways in the legal world.
Yeah.
Neither here nor there. But you keep saying sixteen years. What has changed in sixteen years? A lot, in the world.
Oh, well, in the world, a whole lot.
And all I'm saying is, we just need to look at this and see if we have any blaring issues. There may be something on your side that needs to be addressed.
Well, something seems to have happened, because we've been through, we started the budget process in June, we're now down at the end of August.
Yes, sir.
But something must have happened to light the fuse on the problem here, or the, you're, you perceive it as a problem, and it doesn't seem to involve the other seven departments, because they're not up here wanting to make changes. So I don't know, has something happened?
No, 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 nothing's happened. Is, and I, I don't mean this, I've been in the fire service twenty years. Joe's been in the fire service longer than I have. Joe is credentialed more than I will ever be, and I've, if we want to start talking about ICS and all that, he'll blow us out of the water. He holds the highest rank that has taught the highest ICS certification that they hold in the fire service. So I'm not going to go there. There's just some things that need to be clarified.
Okay.
That's it. I mean, I, I've heard the talk.
And I would suggest this. I've already got two that say, leave the contract alone. I would suggest this. If you want to bring some kind of changes back to us, get the attorney for the city to look at it, to look at your proposed changes, email them to me. I'll send them to Brad for his review, and we'll bring them back. But the timeline's pretty short right now, because we've got to get this done in September, because we're about to adopt the budget in, uh, ten days or so.
We don't want to change in money, so we're not talking about monies.
Okay, that's not.
At, at all. That, I, I don't.
Well, you should.
We are good.
This is the largest increase we ever gave for fire departments.
We, we are good with that.
It's a good year. It's a good year. Mayor, you, I got a smile finally out of Mayor.
Hey, I'm good. I, we, we are, we're trying to get the dialogue going, and if, if y'all are comfortable with going through the attorney, we can go through the attorney and, and get them. We'll make, we'll make what updates and stuff that we want to do, and you'll get a copy of that back. Uh, we will shoot very hard for the September fifth date for your first meeting. I think it was the fifth or sixth date.
The fifth is a holiday, the sixth is.
Sixth, maybe, okay.
That's when we'll likely adopt the budget, and usually, right after that, that starts the timeline of me trying to get all those contracts sent out.
Well, we'll, what we'll do, if we can do it by that time, and don't drag you under the bus again, we get that done and get that in their hands, get us, make sure it's got what we're talking about, and get the attorney to look at it, and try to get it back to you by the September sixth. So y'all can have it, and then the next meeting, y'all can look it over, and then that next meeting, get your hands laid on it.
Let me give you a little bit of personal information. I've got to have foot surgery day after tomorrow, and I'm going to be kind of out for about a week. So if you send something, copy Loretta and copy Brad on the email, so they can look at it as well and review it. I'm going to be, uh, it's going to be a mess for a while.
Okay.
I'll be one-legged for a while.
So will you, Loretta and Brad go in?
Loretta, Brad, and me. Look us all three in on any kind of information that you send, that you want us to look at, especially that that comes from the attorney. Who do y'all use now? Is it still Lois?
Same, well, her, not Lois, no, um.
Eileen Hayman.
Eileen, yeah.
She's, she's all in the same office we use for years.
Eileen who?
Hayman.
Hayman, okay.
Same, same law firm.
Okay, okay. Well, they, they've done a good job, I think, for Eastland for a long time. Uh, Cisco uses Bill Wright, and I don't know who Ranger uses, but, um, send something to us that has some, some kind of information about what you want to try to get accomplished. I'll bring it to the commissioners if I'm able to on the sixth. I probably will be. By then, surely, the medicine is worn off.
Well, if you're not available, she can give it to their hands, obviously.
Well, yes, and Robert is a senior commissioner, so I've already told him that I may be non encompassmentist at that point, too, so, um, send us something.
Okay.
Okay.
Judge, may I address the workers' comp?
Yep, please.
Um, the workers' comp coverage is through Texas Association of Counties Risk Management Pool, and it is my understanding that it only pays for incidents outside of city limits. Uh, it's been a long time since I've discussed that with them. I can verify.
Any city.
That's, 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 that's the kind of stuff we're wanting to, I wanted that answer right there. That's it. I didn't need an attorney for that. That was it.
Well, I think, I think if you go from city to city and work an incident, like, maybe you went to Ranger and worked on the, the church fire, and something happens over there, that's inside the city limits. That doesn't really have an effect on the county. So their city, their workers' comp, if somebody gets hurt, should pick up on that.
Yes, but that, I mean, that was the kind of answers I want. But the way, like I said, and I was kind of, I wanted to open this dialogue, the way I read that contract, it's an Eastland-specific contract. When you leave the city of Eastland, you're in the county.
Until you get into another city.
Okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay.
So that means you ain't got to come back.
Thank you.
He said, he said, yeah.
If y'all get something worked out internally with the attorney, with Ms. Hayman, Hayman, and send that to Brad, Loretta, and myself, we'll review it. And we do have three meetings in September.
Yes, sir.
That we can put it in there and have you come back and.
We'll shoot for the sixth.
Okay.
We're depending on the attorney. You got a holiday, but we'll, we'll make that our target.
Sam, you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Comment?
Just a, a comment to put on the table. Uh, Mr. Rains is absolutely right under the law that you have no responsibility to pay for any of these services, but you've agreed on, on a level to provide thirty thousand, as I understand it, in the coming year. You can get a full range of firefighting services for the same thirty thousand, rather than maintaining that you're only responsible for fire suppression. So we're not asking for more money to, to provide more services. We're already providing those other services for NVA's, plane crashes, train wrecks. I mean, we'll go to all of that stuff.
Okay.
Good.
Okay, we're good.
Thank you all for your time. Appreciate it.
Send me what you want to send me.
Well, yeah, send it to whoever can.
Okay.
Place them on.
Yeah.
All right. And with that, we're going to move to item number eight, which is hold the public budget hearing under Local Government Code one-one-one point zero-zero-seven. Is anyone here for a public budget hearing? With that, uh, we will move on. Anybody need to take a break?
Yeah, let's take a break.
Okay.
I'll make the motion.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and we're We've got a motion to go back into session. Do I hear a second?
Say.
Second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries. Okay, I've had a request from Treasurer Christina Doddroll to take care of the bills, claims, and accounts at this time, so she can go ahead and get that process going. Can we have a motion to go ahead and consider number twenty-three, bills, claims, and accounts? Motion made, seconded. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and we'll consider the bills, claims, and accounts. All right. Ms. Key, are you prepared?
You ready?
I am.
Okay, the first one is August tenth through twelfth, health reimbursement arrangement, uh, deductible reimbursements for employees and officials. The next one is August nineteenth, payroll. This is all payroll payables other than workers' comp and unemployment. The next one is August nineteenth, payroll, that is gross wages. The next one is, um, August fifteenth, this is the ARPA funds, and it is for the precinct three, is that yours, Commissioner?
Yes, ma'am.
Precinct three grader. The next one is comdata. It's dated August tenth. It will be paid today. Then August seventeenth, comdata also to be paid today. The next one is regular payables for today. Uh, it's already been approved. Oh, I thought you were.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what?
I thought you were talking about the one for county clerk records management.
No.
I'm sorry. I thought I heard Kathy. Uh, the next one is August twenty-third, payable. That's Atmos that we are just adding on, and it'll be paid today. And then the last one is August twenty-fourth. That is the two Tahos for the sheriff's department. Um, I'm not sure they are complete and at the sheriff's department, so once we verify that, uh, that one will be released also.
All right, gentlemen, questions or comments about the bills, claims, and accounts? All right. Can we have a motion in the favor, bills, claims, and accounts as presented?
I'll make it.
Can we have a second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, same sign, and that carries.
Number ten.
You talking about me or Pam?
Pam.
I can't believe you talked her back into that.
Oh, it's just a couple of days a week in short term.
She probably misses the camaraderie and she's been around. She probably misses the camaraderie and being around you guys.
We miss her.
We'll call it camaraderie, but I think you spell it with two, a B and an S a little bit there.
Never in my office.
I'm trying, Kathy Junior.
I know.
He burnt this file.
Some people didn't do this.
Uh-oh, didn't do it.
Miss Loretta did, but two top hands down there didn't.
Oh, boy.
It's like a stuck. Good catch.
Yeah.
I'm so proud of you.
Thank you. All right, with that then, we will move back up to item number nine. Commissioners vote to set the salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected county precinct officers under Love Government Code one-five-two-point-zero-one-three. Ms. Key?
This is the list, this is the budgeted salaries, longevity, and the sheriff is the only one receiving a cell phone allowance in fiscal year, the only elected official receiving a cell phone allowance in fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. But this is what each of the elected officials was furnished.
Okay, and just for the record, nobody filed a salary grievance this year, so there was no, none of that process that took place. Gentlemen, any questions or comments on this vote? Hearing none, do we have a motion then to set the salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected county and precinct officers? Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Aye as well, it is unanimous. All right, thank y'all. Moving on to item number ten, District Clerk to file the order appointing Assistant Auditor, some lady named Pam Floyd.
Morning.
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 Do you want me to tell you what Pam is coming back to do?
That would be great.
Okay, with all the insurance changes and everybody, employees receiving salary increases, Pam is going to come back and coordinate, make sure all that gets done correctly. So she'll be here from tomorrow through September thirtieth, and then her job will be done.
Is she gonna work two days a week, or whatever she needs to work?
Right.
You're not gonna have a set
No.
time for her to come in and do what she needs to do?
No, we just appreciate her offering to come do it.
Is she still working part-time over at the probation department?
She is, so she's going to keep working Wednesdays over there.
Okay, she worked one full day over there, okay. Okay, well, our only, our only action here is to accept the order. Do I have a motion to accept this order from Judge here, District Judge, about appointing Accounts Payable Assistant Auditor Pam Floyd, Assistant?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, say aye. Let's just have a unanimous, aye as well. All right.
Thank you.
Ma'am? Okay, we have item number eleven up next, District Clerk to request ARPA funds for records management, drawn by Tessa Coverhouse.
And I gave you my letter, so I'll just read it. Dear sirs, I'm requesting additional funds to preserve and digitize historic case files held in the District Clerk's possession that are in danger of further deterioration. It is my understanding that Eastland County received over three-point-five million dollars from the American Rescue Plan Act. Several other counties have used these similar funds towards their court's preservation projects. If this money has already been allotted, ask the court to search for other revenue sources to fund this project. Attached is a proposal from, and information from COFILE to preserve and digitize paper case files held in the District Clerk, held by the District Clerk. The Texas State Archives Commission deemed all paper records dated nineteen-fifty or older permanent. Our oldest cases date back to eighteen-seventeen, these images have never been scanned or preserved. This has led the clerks having to handle these delicate records, to search and make copies, increasing the exposure of these fragile documents to the elements. We are currently working to unfold many years of records to save money during the scanning process. COFILE currently has a group of our case files, estimated at sixteen rows of cases, which equals ninety-one thousand seventy pages, which also equals twelve-hundred-and-forty-one cases, costing the county thirty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-three dollars. In our basement storage, I have a remaining one-hundred-and-three shelves plus twenty boxes of adoptions. I'm asking the court to fund the next phase of the project and to help develop a long-term archival plan. I appreciate the court's consideration of this proposal. So basically today, I gave you some information attached, some of it just for your information. Part of it is to show you, if you'll look at the first packet, and you flip to the third page, it'll show you what I'm currently working on. So the basement is where I started because it's the cheapest place to start. Everything's unfolded and it's flat, and it's ready to go. If I send it off to COFILE and have them unfold it all and take all the staples out of everything, it costs even more. So I'm trying to get everything downstairs in our basement scanned right now. There is, that's, so the earliest cases are in my office, the next oldest are in the basement, I have two rooms there, and then across the, over the annex, I have two other rooms over there, three basically. And those are our oldest ones. I have done in seven years, I have, I've done everything I can to save money in order to get as much done with the records as I can. I've organized a lot of it, I wish you could have seen the befores to what it is now. I've spent many hours, and we took advantage of COVID especially, during that time, we, we did so much work. I shredded at least two-hundred boxes of documents, like cash register receipts, older than I am. I have cleaned up a lot through COVID, but the girls are always having a box next to their desk where they're unfolding and stapling and taking things out, so that way it's flattened, and by the time we're getting to, hopefully get to the point of scanning, it'll be at a cheaper cost. Currently, right now, I have two free services going on, so I have Family Search, who's currently unfolding for me, and then they're digitizing as well. They did that also when Carol Anne Britton was District Clerk, so that is tremendous help. The only thing with that is it doesn't preserve the document. All they're doing is unfolding the documents and then taking a picture of them and digitizing them, so I can find them.
The Mormons?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then currently, I also have a volunteer that works in my office who is unfolding and, for free, she doesn't want any pay, nothing. She is unfolding and doing a tremendous job. She's been here a couple of weeks, and she's already unfolded eight boxes of, of case files. So the problem is, on these older ones that we have across the street, I can't scan them, they're so fragile, they can't go through our scanners, they can't do any of that. And a lot of them are really cool, but they just shred if we put them through, and so we don't do that. Today, I know that you've got ARPA funds, and you may already have them allotted, but this is a, I want to educate you today on what the problem's gonna be in coming years. Because I've done, I've exhausted every avenue in the last seven years to do everything I can at the minimum. And so now I'm to the point, I've got it organized enough, and I know exactly what I need to do, exactly where everything is, and I need it to go to scanning and be preserved, so that these documents will last much longer. Efficiency is, is one reason. These files that COFILE has scanned for me, I can go on the computer and pop them up, and I can print them out right there without even having to go down the basement or across the street, which is great. The other thing is, I'm running out of room. So there's a lot of shuck cabinets over across the street, we have emptied those. Well, we emptied them, and we put the folded shuck cabinets, a shuck is basically a piece of paper that is folded in three, and it doesn't save the document, so now we're having to unfold them so we can digitize them. So now all those shuck cabinets are sitting over there empty, well, three rows, three drawers of each shuck cabinet fit in one box. Well, that's great right now, but as we're unfolding, one box turns to three boxes. So now I have an issue of, I'm already out of space, and the, you'll, when I, I want to take you over there and see, when you see the criminal room, it does look partially empty, but because they're all in shucks, we emptied all those, stuck them in boxes, but pretty soon when we get all that unfolded, it's gonna be, there's no more room. So my civil room you're gonna see is already busting at the seams, and we're still unfolding as we speak. So that's an issue. I do have, I told you about the, the free services that are there, but I really want to educate you today and, and show you what the issues are going forward on, and see what, if you can see a visual of what I have, then you can see what, what I'm dealing with. I get about twenty-five dollars off of every case that's filed. So if I get a thousand cases a year, I'm looking at twenty-five thousand dollars. And in twenty-five thousand dollars, you can see that only sixteen rows I spent thirty thousand dollars on. So that's gonna take me like thirty-three years to do only the documents that I have right now, that's if they add no more documents today. And that doesn't even include the big books that I have to preserve. So I sent off some books a few years ago, about four of them cost me about eleven thousand dollars. So we're in the wrong business, first off. But, so it's, it's becoming an issue, and when I send off a book, it comes back as two books. So it doesn't, there's another storage issue, so I either need more storage, or we need to, and what I'm, what I want to do is take these boxes, and how I'm gonna shrink them, hopefully, is one day when I get all of these scanned, is keep the, the beef of the case. So I'm keeping the orders, the things that open the cases, and then the things like attorney vacation notices and correspondence from defendants, and shredding all the not important stuff and keeping all the other that is important. So that way I'm not just shredding cases, because people say, well, you don't have to keep those, well, I can't shred those. That would be a disservice to the, the community, because people come in fifty years from now and they want a divorce, sorry, I shredded that. Well, then what do they do for their retirement and then all their state funding, or what is it, their, they use it for insurance purposes and things, they have to have all their divorces, well, if I just shred those, they get nothing, yeah, thank you. So that's one thing, is I don't want to just shred the cases just because I don't have to legally hold them anymore, but it is becoming an issue, and I just ask that anything that is allotted, if there's anything left over, or anything that I can, I can get to help with this project, I would very much appreciate it. But I urge you to ask questions, because I want you to understand the issues that I'm running into.
So you're needing three hundred and seventeen to just to start?
That, that's just if I do the basement, yes, sir, so this is just to give you the numbers of, if we did the entire, like, I say entire project, but you have to remember the entire project, this doesn't include the books I have to preserve, and then also it doesn't include supplies in order to store my documents, like the, the boxes that I've put everything in, and the folders, and the stickers, and things like that.
There's no grants or nothing like that to try to help you do this stuff?
There, there is, and so this one judge, she's a very historical, and I can't remember his name, he spoke at some of our conferences. They only pick the ones that are historical, like they don't want, oh, they'll just come help you, because I tried that, and they'll do like our Santa Claus bank robbery, but that's like this many files. You know, I'm like, well, that's great, but I have like hundreds of thousands of other files, and so that's, that's the issue, is I haven't found any that they don't want just the historical part of it, they want...
They won't do all of them, they just pick out the ones that...
Because I thought, oh, I'll include that, and they were like, no, we only do that. Oh, well, that doesn't help me a whole lot.
Tessa and I visited Wise County District Clerk years ago.
Years, probably at least five or six years ago.
It was probably right after Griffin was born, I bet.
Probably.
Yeah.
And they have, in their offices, and county's out of storage space. I mean, we're about to have an issue with where does everybody keep the records that they're required to keep? That, that District Clerk had gone through the archival process and with minimal space, because when you take all the correspondence and, and the non-essential paperwork out of these files, they're gonna be very thin. So even though she would be keeping the orders and the petitions and that kind of stuff...
It shrinks the file tremendously.
Right, the file then becomes very thin. So what we looked at was a plan, but I want to give you history. I sat at this table about nineteen years ago as District Clerk, having the same conversation that these records need to be archived, and let's start doing something about, because I was out of storage at that point. I know Carol Britton also sat at the table and asked Commissioners Court also to help funding the archival process. Now it's not an option, there, there is no option to it. So we're at the point that the court is going to have to figure out how to fund what is required of Tessa, because she's not getting enough funds on an annual basis to even do what she's accumulating every year.
Did we not start with funding with Carol Anne to, for several years?
There was some funding, but...
There was ten thousand, we started, we gave ten thousand a year until the funds built, built up.
Right, but it's still not enough, I mean, it's so far behind that it's going to take substantial funding to get it where she needs it, and then it will be manageable, once she's current, that will be manageable on an annual basis.
And in my office up here, currently, if I, you kind of guesstimate how, how much more room I have on the civil side. I have about, in two years before I run out of space up here in the civil, which means usually we take cases and we move them downstairs, and we take the oldest one downstairs, move them across to the annex. I don't have anywhere to move them, especially civil, civil is, there's no room. And so I, I don't know, and I'm highly organized, and I try to get every crevice I can to put all of the cases into, but there's, like over at the annex, there's windows and stuff that, you know, I'm gonna have to have covered, because it'll deteriorate the cases, you know, heat and cooling, which Donnie has done great with helping me on getting some over there. So that helped tremendously, because they were just sitting in the heat and cold. And then, like on the floor, they can't beat any on the floor because of flooding and stuff, so I've, I've done everything I can, and down in the basement, I may try to squeeze a couple more in, but there's, there's really no, no, I mean, it's not gonna do much. I mean, it'll, it's minor, and it'll put a Band-Aid on it, it's just, I've exhausted every avenue, and, and, and so that's why I'm here asking, because I, I'm, I don't know what we're gonna do in the next few years.
Are there any ARPA funds that haven't already been encumbered?
They are all committed, the only funds that might be available is Eastland County Water Supply District, if they don't need their funds or, or a portion of them.
We're not really gonna hear back from them, as you might know.
They're working through the grant, trying to see if they've got, they've got other issues out there right now, they're trying to get their hands around, but, and they're getting closer on that, the water intake issue.
And I know Loretta said that it's just Tessa's office, but it's every county office that has to maintain records. So it's like Andrea's, like my office, like the JP offices, so just wanted to make that clear.
Well, and even my office, I have permanent records, and I have one small vault over at the annex, and when that fills up, we're gonna, what I see is if we don't do something, we're gonna end up having to build a climate-controlled storage unit.
We could close the gold, we could close the gold lantern area down and move in there, but that's gonna create an issue.
Oh, oh, that's not enough space.
But it's some space.
It would, it would take the whole Bailey Center.
It'd be, yeah, yeah, it'd be a Band-Aid on it for, you know, a little while.
It is climate-controlled.
You could only put one offices in there unless you designate it, because mine's over there, and, and Loretta and I are the only ones that don't keep, because nobody else can have access to it.
You'd have to, you'd have to partition it in there.
Yeah, you'd have to.
Yeah.
I'm just giving you something to think about for the future.
With different queues.
If we don't continue needing the gold lantern area, that could be turned into some kind of storage, it's not very wide, but it goes to full width of the building, full length of the building.
Well, and not only are the nineteen-fifty and before cases permanent, all of my murders and sexual assaults, but then you also have to remember, it's not just the case file that I have, I have the reporter's record, and I have the exhibits, and I have, so all that that goes to that case is also permanent. And so that creates, you know, so...
I didn't realize you had any records back to eighteen-seventeen.
I've got eighteen-hundred, yeah, it's, it's really cool, like some of them are...
Eight, that's where the county was incorporated.
They're way, way back. They're way, way back there.
Wow.
Yeah, I found case number one when I was in office, in office a few years ago, and it was like, oh, wow.
Eighteen seventeen.
Yeah, I mean, they're way back there.
Wow.
Yeah, and even back when we were, um, the eighty-eighth District Court, so, and we had all the, um, misdemeanors too in our, our office. But...
So there's nothing left in your archive funds beyond what you've already gone through?
There, there's very minor. And so, and I don't want to completely exhaust all of it, because, I mean, it's like thirty thousand dollars maybe. I'm not sure the amount, but there's like, but I have to have the supplies and the, um, and...
What about any of the other dedicated funds that you have? Are there any of those that can be used for this project?
That's all of them. You get the Record Preservation, the Archive, and then the, um, Record Preservation Archive and Records Management, yes sir. Yeah. So those are the three that I get, and it's...
There's no money extra in those, any of those funds that you could move over and pay for this?
No, I use all of them to do all of my projects.
At least this thirty thousand dollar project that you're proposing?
No, this one's already been done. This is the one y'all just approved. I'm just, this is just the example of what they're currently having, what, what is gonna be, what is gonna entail do the rest. And the, the county clerk has more money than the district clerk, because they've, they're, they've been collecting it for much longer than the district clerks have, which, I don't know.
I should not be penalized for that.
No, and I'm not saying you should be, I'm just saying, like, that's just the nature of the beast.
I'm just, I'm just saying, and I'm just saying that, you know, I understand this is her, her agenda item, but, you know, I just want to make, clarify that every office has statutory duties to keep records.
But that's why our funds are different.
Yeah. I think there had to be some difference in there.
Yeah, that's because they've been collecting.
And if you'll remember, I brought back a couple of weeks ago, my project, those are eighteen hundred records too, eighteen ninety-eight, might be a few earlier.
Yeah, I could see that, but eighteen seventeen's intriguing, but why would there be even a district court in Texas in eighteen seventeen?
Crime has always been here.
Well, and Tessa's oldest records, um, a commode hung, I think, on the third floor, and water ran down when the district clerk's office was over here. So her oldest records were water damaged too.
Yeah, some of them we open and they just like, when we're done with it, I mean, our desks are just...
Is that the year it was, twenty eleven?
No, it was, no, it was...
That was the one in the district.
Yeah, that was before I was even here, so prior to two thousand and three.
So what you're asking for today is first, one, to see if there's any ARPA funds left.
Yes, sir.
And I'm hearing that there's probably not, unless the Eastern County Water Supply District doesn't need all of theirs.
Yes, sir.
We don't know that for a while. And then the others, just to really explain to us, and I, I put on the next agenda item on there, is to invite the Commissioners of Terrell District Record Storage Facilities. You'd like for them to see how that works.
Well, and because I'm talking about this, but it really means nothing until I can show you, okay, look, this is really what I'm working with, and this, just to educate you on why, why I'm asking for it, and then that way you can see, um, what's going on for yourself. And then that way, when I come back and explain something, you're going, oh, that's because, you know, so you already know. But, yes, and then just to develop a plan, because I don't know, I don't know the next step. Like I'm just, it's just gonna keep filling up, so...
Gentlemen, questions, comments, suggestions?
No, I remember talking about it when Carol Anne was in there and doing that ten thousand to help that fund build up, to try to get ahead of this.
Do we still fund that at ten thousand a year?
No.
I don't think so.
We just did one time.
Not since I've been here.
We did it a few years.
We did it a few years and to keep, start the plan to start it working.
And Tessa had, uh, part-time in her budget, I believe, in your general fund budget, didn't you have the part-time in there?
It wasn't, no, I think it was in our archive.
Okay, okay.
But it was only like five hundred dollars. It wasn't anything, no, no ma'am. It wasn't anything significant, but I, uh, I just wanted y'all to be aware of the issue that's...
It's, there's probably not going to be, I've just, probably not gonna be an ARPA fund.
Well, I, I mean, and that's fine, I just knew, I need to ask if there's anything, and then that way, if, if there is, then I have, there's the option, I brought it.
You're not gonna get it if you don't ask for it.
Right, exactly, exactly.
All they say is no and throw things at you.
That's right, that can dodge.
I thought the water district was kind of leaning like they weren't gonna use that.
I haven't heard yet that they weren't gonna use some of it. At first they wanted a bigger amount, then they found out they could get a grant for part of it. So I think they're still gonna need part of it from us, part of it from this grant they're trying to get. Unless that's changed.
Yeah, Steve was here last time, he's acting like we might not need it.
I spoke to the State Bar before I brought my project to you guys, because they had a grant three years ago that was available. And it wasn't just for certain, you know, pick and choose what they thought was important. It was a set amount, if you applied for it, then you could get it. Talked to the project, uh, records management, and she said there's not one currently, but they're looking at picking up a few in the future.
Okay.
So that might be an avenue. And they'll come speak to us, they'll let us know. Yeah. It was a nice grant fund.
Really?
Mm-hmm. It's from the State Bar of Texas.
Anything else to tell us or share with us, or?
No, I just want to show you what I've got, and then that way you have a visual.
Gentlemen, I would encourage each of you to go by, take some time and see what she's got. I don't go down there very often, but I do go down there some and, oh, over, I did have to go over into the annex or something, and it is cram-packed in there, that area that she's got. She found a file cabinet for county records.
I did.
Commissioner's Court records.
I had county records, I had treasurer records, I had, uh, county ju- or, um, JP records.
There's a lot of Judge Bailey's writings and letters and stuff. I just put all of it, there's like two file cabinets. I put them all down into the storage area down in the basement over here, to give her some more room. Of course, mine's full now, but anyway. I encourage y'all to go by and see what Tessa's trying to tell you about. You got a visual on it, Dave.
I've been in there before. You also got the roller cabinets in this one?
Uh, yes, I do, but it's changed significant, significantly just since I've been in office. I mean, all of the, our storage units. I, I mean, I want to show you all three of them, and I'll take all five of you at the same time if you want, but, I mean, it's...
They all fit in there?
Yeah.
Then there's more room than you know.
I think the intention was to ask them to all go now.
You want us to go now and look at your, at least look at this down here?
Yeah, we can go now and look at this down here in the basement, too.
We'll take a recess and do that.
Are we done with this item, Judge?
The invitation?
Uh, invite is number twelve, we're on number eleven.
I think we're moving them all, yeah, I think we're done with that. Moving on to number eleven. She's inviting us to go look at the storage areas. At least the ones here in the courthouse. I think that'd be a great idea. Let's take a recess and let's go, let Tessa show us what she's trying to explain to us. So with that, I make the motion to take a short recess. Do I have a second?
I'll take it.
All in favor, say aye. And we're gonna take a recess and go look at what Tessa's got to show us.
People actually come to our office floor. So I took everything from over across the street, moved it over here, and all the key books I took over there. So I have just as many over in the under. So, you can see, like, right now, we're okay, uh, for now, but in the next few years, it's...
If an attorney comes in and needs to do research to find what the filings are, do they go online in a kiosk or something?
No, sir. No, sir. We have to pull the book and take it up there, and then, or we pull the file and bring it to them. No one comes back here. No, sir. Well, because of the records, and when I came into office, they weren't coming back here, and it, it, it's too much confusion. And so it's streamlined it to just shut it down and just bring in the record. That way everything stays clean and nothing's misplaced. So, and then the girls keep a, um, a box by their desk, and as they have, if they ever have any, um, time to unfold, then they'll, um, sit and unfold, and then I have a part-timer at State Comes, um, whenever she wants, because she's free, I tell her she can come whenever she wants. And she sits in the criminal room and office and unfolds documents. And she pulls staples, which is a money saver. So, questions?
So with you, uh, that system you're willing to get or whatever, if they come in and help you a bit, will you rid all that?
Well, not completely, but yeah, shrink it, yes. So like, everything, so a file that would be, because some of these, like, may look like one case, but some of these, there may be, this may be the entire case. So like, a couple of our cases, it's fifteen of those, or twenty of those, on the big ones. So yeah, I can take out all the junk, and then keep all the orders and everything that is, uh, needed. And then I would shred the rest, or shrink like the fifteen cases down to just a little bit.
Nice.
Yeah. And then, uh, we also have passports, um, so I also keep passports, uh, back here, and, uh, the information for their applications. And so that's one reason it's cut off also, um, and so I have to have storage for all that too, so that's why these walls aren't cool. Uh, two years.
Two.
Yes, sir. And then that's another avenue I may look into. Some counties on district courts are taking their passport application fee, which is thirty-five dollars an application, and they're, um, keeping it for their records management. So that's something that some of the courts are doing too. But, that's also, it goes into general fund, so that would be taking it from general fund and keeping it from records management, so that's...
Yeah, and it can't be a whole, I wouldn't pay you a whole lot.
How many?
Um, it just depends. Um, we can get up to fifty a month, um, but usually it's about twenty, yeah, it's not, it's not a whole lot, but... Yeah, in our fifty months, from January to April, we'll get anywhere from forty to fifty applications. Because we get them from the bigger cities, because they don't have to have an appointment, and we'll let them walk in and do it. And we're the only place in that county that offers that. You have to go to Stevens County or Amblin or Stevieville to do that, and they have appointments. So, any other questions?
Let's look at the question.
Okay.
Any questions?
No.
Okay.
There you go. I'll go first.
I have to get saved tonight. What's my journey? Yeah. Next train is square, I'll take the church a little bit. Was chicken you get there, right?
I don't take elevators. No, that's fine, but I need the exercise.
Now you're supposed to be on camera, smile.
This is where I went, and my internet problem, though. Wow. Well, just crammed in here.
Yeah, just cram in here, go ahead.
Get out of here.
It does.
Who was in here?
Prostration party.
Yeah, that's right, probation was in here.
Mr. Adams, how are you, sir?
Doing good, doing good. Yeah.
Came to see what you're doing.
And I have a live mic, so just, just to warn, no, you can say anything, but just watch it. Just wanted to make everybody aware of that. Anybody else?
Yeah, this is my criminal and tax room, so any overflow from upstairs, which you see have a few rows, um, but criminal's not my huge issue right now, civil is. Uh, so this is just civil and criminal, and civil and, I mean, I'm waiting to be straight. This other room's bigger.
I like the way they're all in different places. Wow. That's a lot of files. I'm probably losing my internet down here in the tunnel. Stay behind. That's a lot of, uh...
Oop, oop, oop. Oceans, um, and then this over here is to be shred, and then those are adoptions. Um, I'm hoping, possibly I'm gonna look into getting some files like that in the back, and maybe put across here, um, and so I can put my adoptions in it and get them out of the, what co-file currently has, and what they're working on. So that's...
That's part of that thirty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. All of what you see is that, what you see as empty is thirty thousand dollars. So you see, what else I have to do is none of this...